July 21st. Uh, you'll be along, I presume. At 7:12. The public hearing has been held for the purpose of considering one agricultural exclusion application by the district. The public hearing was advertised on Thursday, July 9th, and July 15th, 2020, in the calendar pursuant to the Agricultural Land Commission Act Regulation 171, 2002. The role of council is to hear representation from those persons who wish to provide comments on matters related to the application. Everyone who wishes to speak shall be given the opportunity to be heard. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views known. However, it is important that all who speak at this meeting restrict their matters remarks to the matters related to the application, and it is my responsibility as Chair of this meeting to ensure that all remarks are so restricted. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council this evening is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed application with individual citizens. A member of council who was not present at the public hearing may vote on the application if they have been given a written report of the public hearing. Council may, without further notice, amendment to the proposed application to accommodate representation made at the hearing. Submissions regarding the proposed application may be received prior to or at this hearing. No further information or representation can be received or considered by council after the public hearing is terminated. Could I state your name when you are at the podium before you begin your comments? And I'll ask, uh, who's introducing this? We'll get you up. Scott, oh, um, done my opening statement.
My name is Scott, I'm the Public Works Manager with the District. To optimize the new HX Grinda Middle School design, the school parking lot entry point on Concho Road is required to be located on land that is currently privately owned, shown on the slide which is included in the agenda package and on the screens in front. After negotiations with the property owner to acquire the land required were unsuccessful, council passed a resolution on March 31st, 2020, to expropriate the required lands and make application to the Agricultural Land Commission for exclusion of the property from the agricultural land reserve. As part of the application process for the exclusion of the subject area, the Agricultural Land Reserve Transitional Regulation requires a public hearing to be held.
And, uh, the proposed amendment is for the exclusion of that one. A letter is received. Uh, Brina? You have a microphone?
I do.
Oh, you might. Okay.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have several letters that have been received that I will read into the record. So bear with me while I have about eight pages to read. The first letter I have is from James D. Fraser dated July 21st from Lawson-Londell Law Firm. As the District is aware, we are legal council to Forrest Opland, the current registered owner of the above noted property. We write in relation to the District's decision to restart the process to apply to exclude Mr. Opland's property at 10220 Concho Road from the ALR. The District has our May 28th letter, a copy of which is attached, advancing Mr. Opland's technical and substantive objections to the District's first ill-fated attempt to proceed as owner of his property when the land remained owned by Mr. Opland. We have reviewed the District's new notice and agenda restarting the process in its proper role as a municipality and through a public hearing process. We are surprised to see the agenda omits any reference to our May 28th letter, let alone letters from others that the District clearly received before posting the agenda. As these letters clearly advance substantive objections, they form part of a procedural record that should have been part of the public hearing agenda. Mr. Opland therefore reserves the right to challenge the procedural regularity of hearing. In any event, Mr. Opland maintains the substantive objections in the May 28th letter, reserving the right to supplement this before council tomorrow and the ALC. In this regard, Mr. Opland retains his request that any exclusion application the District may make to exclude the property give Mr. Opland the opportunity contemplated under Section 20, subsection 22-2C and 24C of the ALRT regulation to be heard in person by the ALC. The second letter is May 28th, also from James Fraser of Lawson-Londell. We are legal council to Forrest Opland, the current registered owner of the above noted property. We write in accordance with the notice to provide Mr. Opland's comments concerning the exclusion application. Mr. Opland reserves the right to present further comments to the District and/or the ALC as contemplated by the ALC Act, Chapter 36, and the ALR Transition Regulation, B.C. Regulation 171, 2002. Mr. Opland objects to the exclusion application on the following grounds. The notice is invalid and of no force and effect under Section 16 of the ALRT regulation and cannot support a valid exclusion application. The District reports in the notice to make the exclusion application as owner under Section 30 of the ALC Act and Section 16 of the ALRT regulation. However, Mr. Opland, not the District, was the owner of the property at the date of the notice being given, and he remains the owner of the property. The District had no standing to sign the exclusion application as owner or to issue the notice as owner and cannot rely on the invalid notice as the foundation of a valid exclusion application. Number two, in any event, the notice is substantively misleading because it a) variously refers to the property as 0.2 hectares and 0.15 hectares in size. b) misidentifies the District as fee symbol owner. c) omits that Mr. Opland's agricultural land, the north, while approved in principle for exclusion from the ALR, remains agricultural land that spurred Mr. Opland's active farm to be formally excluded from the ALR on conditions of residence. And d) thus omits the crucial fact that the property provides the only legal and practical needs for Mr. Opland to enter and exit his active farm to the north and east. Exclusion of the property from the ALR robs Mr. Opland of practical access to and from his active farm to the north and east contrary to the intention of the ALC Act. Number three, further still, by mischaracterizing Mr. Opland's agricultural land to the north of the property as having been excluded from the ALR, the District has failed to comply with the requirement to give notice of exclusion application to all owners of agricultural land ordering on Mr. Opland's agricultural land as required by Section 16-1C of the ALRT regulation. In this respect, the District has failed to notify the owners that 10291 Meadow Road, which as shown in bold in Appendix A and crosshatched in Appendix B to this letter, remains agricultural land ordering on Mr. Opland's agricultural land to the north of the property, which is the subject of the exclusion application until Mr. Opland's land is removed from the ALR. Given the significance of his objection, Mr. Opland requests that any exclusion application the District may make to exclude the property provide Mr. Opland with the opportunity contemplated under Section 20, Section 22-2C, and Section 24C of the ALRT regulation to be heard in person both by the District and by the ALC. One more of that. This letter is from Mr. Forrest Opland, and it is dated July 20th. Dear sirs and matters, I am the owner of the property which consists of approximately 40 acres that is presently zoned A1. Most of the property is within the agricultural land reserve as identified in green on the attached map. I am actively engaged in farming the property. I acquired the property in February 2019. The previous owner wanted to subdivide the portion of the property along the western boundary shown as the proposed subdivision on the attached map and had done a considerable amount of work with the District and the Agricultural Land Commission to facilitate subdivision. In May 2017, the District provided a report to council, copy attached, to consider a zoning bylaw amendment that would allow for a low-density multiple residential development on a proposed subdivision portion of the property. Following the conclusion of a regular council meeting on May 16th, 2017, council adopted the following resolution, which was confirmed by letter, copy attached. Zoning Amendment, Westgate Fertile Arabians Holdings, LTV, Bylaw 994, 2017, First and Second Readings, March 21st, 2017, Public Hearing, April 18th, 2017. It was moved and seconded that that zoning amendment, Bylaw 994, be read a third time and that prior to adoption, ALR exclusion be finalized for the portion of the property being rezoned that is in the ALR and for the portion required to be dedicated for the Meadows Road-Concho Road connector. And finally, that adoption of the bylaw be subject to confirmation from the ALC that an equal area of agricultural land has been included in the ALR in exchange for exclusion of a portion of the subject property carried. Subsequently, the previous owner was successful in obtaining a favorable ALC decision in May 2018. The ALC exclusion decision, copy attached, approving the exclusion of plus or minus one hectare of land from the ALR to construct a road between Concho Road and Meadow Road, thereby satisfying the only condition of the zoning amendment. The total amount of the exclusion includes not only the portion of the land necessary for constructing the road but also for that portion of the property within the proposed subdivision that was within the ALR, shown in purple on the attached map, thereby creating a new, more easterly ALR boundary. The District firmly supported the exclusion application, which was driven by mutual intent of the former owner and the District to facilitate the subdivision and construct the road and the works incidental thereto. I purchased the property knowing that the District supported the proposed subdivision and the proposed road and that the ALC had approved the exclusion to build the proposed road. Although I have no immediate plans to develop the easterly portion of the property, I bought it knowing that if I decided to do that, I could rely on the District's support. In November 2019, approximately nine months after I purchased the property, I was contacted by the land agent representing the District of Lake Country and was asked to sign a form of road dedication agreement whereby he would dedicate a portion of the property identified as the Panhandle on the attached map to the District. I was advised by the land agent that the District thought that they owned the Panhandle. The fact that they do not is problematic as the District had already made a deal with the school board to provide them with a right of way so the school board could construct a school on the adjacent property owned by the school board and identified on the attached map. None of this was previously known to me. In December 2019, I had some preliminary discussions with the District regarding possible ways to solve the Panhandle problem in a way that mutually, in a way that mutually beneficial way. These discussions gradually became more focused and centered around the idea of me dedicating the Panhandle and the proposed road to the District. In exchange, the District would fast track the proposed subdivision. There were unresolved issues that connected to the road costs and responsibility to pay for those costs and the timing of the road construction. These discussions continued on until January 31st, 2020, when Matthew Salmon, an engineer with the District, sent an email to me advising that the District was prepared to add the road as a DCC road where the road would be constructed and payable by the District. More discussions ensued in early February. Originally, I wanted the District to commit to building and paying for the road within a timeframe. The District countered and said that the legislative framework would not allow them to make deals that would commit future council to financial decisions. This is when they proposed the deal that I thought we had, which is that they add the road to the DCC bylaw and put the cost into the five-year budget. But that council could decide never to build the road. The ask at that point from them was that I accept the possibility that the road may never be built. Matthew Salmon from the District sent me an email, February 12th, copy attached, explaining that the District cannot agree to commit to constructing the road in sort of timeframe or at all as I had requested. That would be up to council. What they could do was add the road as a DCC road and add the cost of the five-year plan and suggested that if they did this, it was very likely that council would at some point construct the road. I agreed to proceed on this basis. On February 24th, Matthew Salmon delivered a form of highway reservation agreement, clearly states that the District is responsible for all costs associated with the road construction. On March 6th, Mr. Salmon, Mr. Salmon, redrafted the highway reservation agreement with some inconsequential changes, but that the documents also had the same language as the first one. On March 9th, my lawyer delivered a letter to Tanda Gross, which detailed the way I would prefer to proceed documenting the transaction, copy attached. On March 12th, my lawyer was contacted by Lindsay Parcells, and they had a discussion regarding how we would implement the steps in the March 9th letter. He said that everything in the letter seemed fine and asked my lawyer to send him a word version to tinker with. I was expecting that he was going to work collaboratively, collaboratively with us to prepare the documents that needed to be prepared. Instead, the next morning, March 13th, he sent my lawyer a revised version of the highway reservation agreement whereby I would be responsible to pay for all costs of the road and infrastructure. When my lawyer questioned the sudden change, he received an email from Alison Espadavet, copy attached, that provided no basis for the change in the deal. The gist of the email was that if I did not see the value in the District's offer, then they would just make an offer to buy the Panhandle or they would expropriate. I received a notice to expropriate shortly after that. There are a number, number of legal difficulties with the proposed expropriation proceeding that I have engaged municipal lawyers from Vancouver to deal with. The proposed expropriation is tied to the District's ALC exclusion application as the Panhandle is within the ALR, which is the subject of a public hearing. I am advised by my Vancouver council that the District has made some significant errors during the application process which have been addressed by their letter to the District of today's date. All of this is expensive for both parties and completely unnecessary. By proceeding with this, with the deal that I thought we had, the District gets the Panhandle for free, which solves a significant pressing problem. The District also gets the road dedication for free and is under no obligation to ever build the road. If the subdivided parcel is ever developed, I am sure that there is a way to charge back the road and infrastructure costs to whomever is doing the development. I get the benefit of a quick subdivision. That is all I am asking for. This is the free and easy way to accomplish a resolution. The way that the District is proceeding is expensive in terms of legal fees, and in the end, if the expropriation is successful, the District will still have to pay for the Panhandle. Also, I expect that even if I am ultimately unsuccessful in my legal challenges to the expropriation, it could take years to resolve. From my perspective, the District's actions are effectively depriving me of the benefit of the ALC exclusion decision, which will result in economic loss. If that happens, I doubt that I will walk away. This is the expensive, difficult, and time-consuming way to accomplish the District's goals. I hope that my local government will reconsider its position. Here's true name. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Anyone in attendance with the proposed exclusion application?
I have a letter.
Say your name.
I'm James. My name is Lee McCarthy, and I live at 10101 Concho Road. And I wrote a letter to the ALR, ALC.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just had to agree about you. Thank you so much.
Um, I wrote a letter to the ALC on, uh, didn't think this. When this first came out and I, I got the notice from the municipality that they were applying to have this property removed from, from my land place. And I'm not, I'm not really thrilled as a taxpayer how any of this is proceeded. I especially want to know why you guys were putting up buildings that you don't have proper access to and what engineer said go ahead and why, why the ground was even broken without, without this all being completed in the first place? That is after the fact speaks volumes about somebody's mishandling of the whole situation. And I would like to see, as a taxpaying member of this community, some sort of, something done about this. We cannot have, you know, you guys just saying, oh, well, we'll do this after the fact. It doesn't work that way. I can't do anything after the fact in this municipality. Why should the school district and why should the municipality? Anyway, back to my letter. Um, I'm writing this letter to protest the exclusion and exclusion and expropriation of the parcel identifier 004709985 lot C, District Lot 118, Assuria Division, Yale District Plan 457, except Plan B 1030, Plans DB 1617D and 2087D, Plans 2009, 20771, 25475, H17634, 36673, 40574, KAP 48994, and CAT 77935. Municipalities should not be permitted to fix their mistakes by expropriation of farmed properties and lands. Municipalities should be required to do the proper surveying and legwork before they spend ridiculous amounts of tax dollars without any consultation of neighboring properties. I received absolutely no development notice from the District about the building of the school or the change in roads that directly affect the entrance to my farm. I see all too often municipalities being allowed to make changes where farmers are not permitted to make changes or enhance their properties. This property that the municipality is trying to expropriate belongs to my neighbor. The municipal, I didn't know that negotiations were on about the road. So I said that the municipality is not approached Forrest except for notice of expropriation and is also threatening him by saying he won't allow him to build his bounding home on his ALR property if he doesn't comply with the expropriation order. Forrest has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars improving his farm, planting hay and building a barn for his future business. He absolutely needs access to his property, and this narrow driveway is the only way he can move his equipment on and off his land. It is true that staff that work at Lake Country Manor Park park in the rough grass of the driveway. The land is a mud road and is simple to return to ALR usage. As a district road, that will not be the case. Why was the school put in that location is a puzzle. It's on a difficult hairpin across from a senior facility. The additional traffic from the school, 600 students, so imagine the number of cars, will also put the seniors who are sequestered to the home right now because of COVID at greater risk that was once our peaceful Concho Road. Please do not allow the exclusion and therefore the expropriation of this property. When municipal staff make errors, and big errors like this, it should not be the farmer that is punished. The ALR is thought to protect farmed lands. Allowing this roadway and parking does not do that at all. This roadway will affect me most personally, and the increase in traffic will cause danger and inconvenience for me and also the residents of Lake Country Manor. And most definitely for Forrest, the owner of the land that is being expropriated. Also, I would like to note that the application said that the municipality is put forth is inaccurate. Question two portion to where it says to quantify and describe in detail all agricultural improvements made to the parcel, um, the municipality is put nil, but this is not true. Great improvements have been made to this farm. Trees cleared, new trees planted, fencing has been put up, the land has been cleaned and planted with alfalfa. It says the farm is pastureland. It is not. It is hay fields. To the self indicates that my farm is inactive. I have never had an inactive farm, and I am very insulted by that. I find it shocking for a municipality to behave in this way. If you grant the District exclusion, you're allowing them to behave this way in the future. If municipalities don't have, follow rules, why should anyone else? And, uh, there's a little bit more. And then I have, um, I have a question. I want to know why, why was the access for the proposed school not completed before the school building was initiated? Why was that, why was, why was that stone turned on that field if you don't have proper access? I saw plans for this school in the paper in November, and they show the access going in through, through forest land, and I knew the municipality in on that land. And I'm just wondering, why would you draw something up and complete it when it's not yours? Do you just expect that the ALC will grant you the, the release and the expropriation of this? Is that what you expect? Oh, well, we made a mistake, so we'll just expropriate it. And what is that saying to me as a farmer? And every other farmer in this municipality, if you decide you want to put in a subdivision and allow a road through? You know, we have rules and processes for a reason, and someone didn't follow due diligence in this. And I'm opposed to the ALR exclusion. I'm opposed for a road being punched through the meadow. There's no, there's no need for it. Well, there was no need for it until we have this mess of a school that you have right over top of the road. It was so ill-thought-out. Why would you ever, ever pass something like that? I just, I just think a big, huge mistake has been made, and now we're all going to bear the cost of this. And I'm resentful to council for that. And whatever engineer you had that said, oh, yeah, go ahead. Uh-uh. He needs his job gone. That's not right.
Thank you. Do we have a copy of that?
Uh, you don't have a copy of my letter. It went to the ALC.
Can we get a copy for the record?
Sure.
My name is Curtis Losich. I live at 10101 Concho Road. I farm the land there, and as a taxpayer of this community, I'd like to know how you approve a $40 million school not knowing that you have access. Who's going to pay that bill to get what you need now? Yeah. And as a taxpayer, I'm going to make it known more clearly that this is going on and it's got to stop. Like, you had a playing field there, you took our only golf course away in this community to put another playing field. You had one. You had a property that connected your senior center, your rec center, and in between another park, and you didn't, and you didn't act on it.
We're talking about the exclusion for this.
It's all tied together.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else good to address the exclusion?
I'm opposed to this. Big time.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Forrest Opland. I'm the owner of the property at question. I've never met any of you guys, but I'm pretty used to the name. I'm currently engaged and actively farming it. Some of the like things that was brought up in that previous negotiation, being the subdivision was prior to me decommissioning the existing house, that subdivision would have been able to allow me to facilitate building a new house, which I'm able to now, and also getting hydro. And also getting hydro across the rail trail so I can have power for a while for doing my farming. And through this whole process, I've kind of just felt like disconnected and steamrolled by the district of, like, I've never met any of you guys, which you guys are kind of the upper decision makers. And I'm open to, I'm open to negotiations, but it's kind of been a closed door ever since the expropriation was posted. It's felt like it's just been a steamroller ever since. I've never been presented with any type of appraisal or financial offer for the purchase of it. It's just been originally a set of documents that said, here, give us land. And that was pretty much it. And then negotiations happened. We had a kind of a bullet notes all agreed upon, but the documents didn't reflect that. And then the expropriation happened, and that's when I engaged lawyers. And they properly drafted what I was asking for in those documents and presented it, and it was just turned away. And it would, it would essentially allow me to get power across to my farm without having to go right across the hayfield. As well as, yeah, it's just going to negatively impact me for the current time, so.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council on this exclusion?
My name's Bill Chiplak. I'm a taxpayer in my country. And my mother lives in the seniors home. And I've seen this boondoggle go on and just shake my head. And I've come here to hold you people accountable. Best description of this scenario that I see, it's a boondoggle. I wrote a letter about it. I got a reply from Mr. Baker, blaming the school district. I agree with this lady here. Why that school is ever put there? It's beyond, nobody can believe it. Anybody that I talk to in the community just can't believe what you people have done. You destroyed the sanctity, the tranquility of some very nice people there, senior citizens with dementia, with problems, trying to live out their life. The construction there lately has just been deplorable. I tried to visit my mom outside in the alleyway. You can't even hear. I can't, I can't communicate with her. When I first heard the school was being built, I heard somebody was buying 18 and a half acre golf course.
For seven million.
For $7 million. And then I, I go visit my mom, and I see this school going up, and I think to myself, who are the people that are making these decisions? Where is this money coming from? And then I go to a meeting in Oyama about the budget for this year, and I hear $4 million to put around about there. Has it gone up to 10 now?
Sure.
Yeah, I see it could be going up because the road's not going where they want it to, and now it's got to go over repairing land. Then this, this procedure here is billed as something to talk, to get the ALRC approval. Where's the hearing for the expropriation? It's not billed as an expropriation here. Do you think anybody in the community would consent or approve of this expropriation if the word gets out and everybody realizes what you people have done? I don't think so. That land, if you're going to continue with this, hear me out, Mr. Baker. That land that was purchased, if it's, if, if you're going to have to carry through with this, personally, I think the whole construction should be terminated, and that school moved where it was supposed to go. If it's not going to happen, whatever costs are involved, that land should be sold to cover all these costs.
Exactly. Yes.
Thank you. That's school district then, but.
Well, you're blaming the school district, but you are, you people are accountable. You've approved it all. So don't blame the school district. This is not an expropriation of Mr. Forrest's land.
We're not talking about that.
It's an expropriation.
Talking about the exclusion of the agricultural portion.
This is not exclusion for the agriculture for that purpose. It's an exclusion to remove a parking lot for the staff there. Have you considered that? That's a staff parking lot you've, you're trying to expropriate and exclude. So 18 and a half billion, 18 and a half acres purchased, and where do you approve the property? These I look at as, I see a bunch of bullies here. This is bully tactics. I'm really disappointed in this administration from the top ground. And I'm here to call for everybody's resignation over this boondoggle.
Thank you.
Just one more thing.
First, I'll ask if there's anybody else which to speak for a first time? Anybody else? Okay, come in.
I'd just like to say, if you're going to start taking portions out to suit your needs for somebody's mistake, in this case, you're looking for exclusion from the ALR for a piece that you made a mistake in, then you better take it all out.
Thank you.
You better reply to how it all.
You better sell that property to pay for it instead of burdening the taxpayer.
Exactly.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council?
I forgot to ask the engineer. I'm Nixon. It's in regards to the, to the portion being used. I haven't like consented, but it's historically been getting used kind of as an old folks' home style parking. And council, the community might not know this, but I've been actively working with them because if this expropriation does follow through, they're going to be really screwed for parking. And they're actively trying to work with the district to do a TUP, which is Temporary Use Permit, for a little different portion of my property so they can just park on it so it doesn't screw them. And it's, I'm not getting any type of financial gain out of this. It's just like, I kind of see an issue that they have, especially under the current circumstance with pandemic. We don't need that extra stress having to deal with parking or parking over at the water park and then, you know, the farmer's market being there some days and kind of screw them up. So I'm actively trying to work with people, but I haven't felt that back, so.
Thank you.
And that's completely allowed under the ALR because that was one of the things I looked up today. And it says parking and loading areas should be permeable in nature wherever possible to reduce impermeable cover and minimize the impacts of stormwater discharge on surrounding agricultural land. That's right under the ALR.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Second time of asking? Third time of asking? All right, we will terminate the public hearing and take five-minute conquer break and head for the counseling.
I just, 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 I Third time of asking. Very none. We'll move on then. And, uh, the development permit with variance. Jamie Duff.
Thank you very much. Where's the... I'll just hold the, uh, the presentation here and make sure that I'm turning the screen appropriately. Turn the screen one. Perfect. Thank you.
You can minimize that a little bit.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, this evening presenting a file on behalf of our senior planner called The Quee, who, uh, couldn't be here. I think he's enjoying some summer somewhere. Uh, so, uh, presented on his behalf. Uh, the, the file is a development permit 2019-001 with variances for a property located at 9542 Jensen Road. Uh, the property is currently zoned for low-density row housing and is in a neighborhood which is, uh, uh, planned within the official community, planned to be higher density, uh, and urban residential in, uh, in relation to even what it is right now. Uh, the subject properties within, uh, some DP areas. It mainly the multi-unit natural environment and greenhouse gas production development permit areas. The file before council is not only the development permit and the consideration of those guidelines, but also of some variances. Uh, variance to reduce the south side yard setback and the south and north landscape buffer. Councilmember called this, uh, this file did come before council late last year, um, in a different form. And, uh, this is the revision and, uh, subsequent, uh, improvements to the, uh, to the proposal. Just feel to visualize the property. It's about just under half an acre, uh, located off Jensen Road, um, within the, uh, very close to the, uh, the town center within the community. In fact, in the town center. And aerial from our GIS system. Showing the property as it is generally right now. Well, it's something from, uh, Google Earth, just showing a bit of a different perspective. Uh, and you can see, uh, other community change happening in that neighborhood and increased densification taking place already. And then with our, uh, featured, uh, land use mapping, the official community plan, you can see, uh, the property is close to the, uh, Middle Vernon Creek as well as, um, being right along the, uh, the high-density residential area within, uh, that neighborhood. So the proposal before council, uh, you can see that, uh, the proposal is to maintain the existing house, uh, actually remove a shed and do some plantings uh, to improve the, uh, the riparian area within the street side protection enhancement area, uh, but also to, uh, construct three 85 square meter cottages or townhouses connected by carports, as you can see on the, uh, proposal before you. And, uh, there are some design drawings prepared of the, the cottages that propose. All shown, uh, cross-section showing the, uh, other connected via carport. Some colors of materials. Although council, um, is not able to, uh, to consider colors within the scope of development permits, gives a feel for the, uh, vision for the development. And, uh, the landscape plan. Don't have to excuse the receipt stamp over a portion of it. But council can see on the landscape plan, uh, substantial improvements being proposed within the, uh, streamside protection enhancement area, actually improving and enhancing the natural habitat, uh, as well as, uh, some to the, uh, the self, uh, property buffer. And in fact, maybe highlighting the, uh, the key variances is of the following slide, which shows these green highlighted areas identifying the variance to the north and south landscape buffer from three meters to 1.5 meters and variance to the south side yard setback from four meters to 1.5 meters. Uh, so that can help council, uh, visualize that. The, the property is somewhat constrained. I mean, it's a, it's a narrow piece of property right along the, uh, the creek in the area. It has existing development on it. And, uh, the proposal for the variances has been a result of, uh, discussions among the, the applicant within neighboring property owners to determine, well, would a property consolidation or lot, um, amalgamation be, uh, be feasible, uh, for, uh, maybe for potentially a larger scale development in the area? However, that hasn't, uh, transpired. There's been little interest, uh, from surrounding properties to, uh, to pursue that. So in seeking to, uh, to meet some of the, uh, development objectives of the, of the community, the applicant has proposed, uh, the house to maintain, to be maintained as well as, uh, the three new cottages. And the three new cottages would, would in fact be, um... Proposed to be purpose-built rental housing. And, uh, the recommendation before council is that, uh, not only the development permit be approved, but actually that a restricted covenant be put in place to ensure that any purpose-built rental housing remains purpose-built rental housing in the, uh, in, in the long term. Uh, it is when we, when staff, uh, look at the, uh, the fact that the proposed development adheres to the majority of the development permit guidelines as well as, uh, highlights some potential improvements to the riparian area on Middle Vernon Creek or the streamside protection enhancement area, as well as, um, adding the potential for long-term purpose-built rental housing, meeting an identified community housing need, uh, that the, the variances are supportable in that regard. So the option before council is that the, uh, the development permit be approved, that a, uh, landscape deposit be, be prepared or a security be prepared and issued to the district and that a section 219 restrictive covenant on the property, uh, be, be put in place, assuring the district that this, uh, will be purpose-built rental housing as a feature and that there's the, uh, standard five-month timeline with three-month extension opportunity on the written request of the applicant. Uh, I do want to quickly mention that the, the applicant has also, uh, mentioned interest in maybe doing a housing agreement as opposed to a restrictive covenant. Obviously, the, the applicant is here this evening and can speak to that. Uh, there are two sides to, um, uh, these different tools that could be used to assure or secure, um, purpose-built rental housing within the community. A restrictive covenant is on title and, uh, remains basically forever, uh, unless removed by either the district as the owner of it uh, or by the, um, by the owner of the property at the basement on a request to the Supreme Court. Uh, now, a housing agreement would be more of a mutual agreement, uh, between municipality and the, and the landlord and typically has a timeline associated with it. So staff looking at the, uh, the, uh, variances and the, uh, all the things that come into the, uh, the washfulness, uh, felt that with the long-term restrictive covenant, the variances could be supported because it would, uh, meet another community need. It would help facilitate the development that, uh, adds some diversity to our housing, uh, options in the community. Your worship? And we, the alternative is to, uh, to not support this.
Any questions for, uh, Penny? Councillor Scarl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Chief Chair. Appreciate your presentation, Jamie. There's just two things that I'm a little confused of old fashioned. So how big are these units in square feet? You, you said 49 cubic meters or something.
The applicant maybe know that off the top of their head. Uh, I'm not, uh...
I think it's 912 square feet.
912, sounds...
I would, I would hate to quote the wrong thing off the top of my head, so excuse me while I do a quick Google conversion for you.
Okay.
Is it going to match with the, uh, the internet?
The second question I have while you're doing that is, um, on, on the slide before, you're talking about the variances that we're applying for. Three meters to 1.5 on the south and north sides. And then four meters to 1.5 for the buffering. Uh, I'm just not catching what that means. Are we going to have two three-meter hedges up and down the sides of these things? Or what is that? What, 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 why is it from four meters to one and a half meters for the side yard setback? And yet only from two meters to one and a half meters for the variance? Uh, the landscape buffer? So tell, teach me what's going on there.
Yeah, and, uh, through your worship, the, um, the variance to the north and, uh, and south landscape buffer. Uh, so we, we have regulations within the zoning ballot with respect to landscape buffers as well as setbacks. So there's a variance to the landscape buffer from three meters to 1.5. Uh, and then only a variance to the south side yard setback from four meters to 1.5. So the, um, the entirety of that, uh, south side yard setback would be, uh, would be landscape buffer, uh, effectively. Uh, now, uh, what, what may be appropriate in this case is to hear from the applicant in that regard so they can, uh, more clearly articulate the, uh, the proposal.
Okay, so I had a square feet turn on to be pretty close to, right?
You're very close, uh, your worship. Um, the, uh, the internet has confirmed that 85 square meters is 914.93. You were right.
I read it. It was in the package.
So your two-step verification.
Thank you.
Yeah, but we don't need to hear. Do you need to hear from that? Well, sure, if you want to talk. It's a, a positive, uh, motion.
Yes, but there's a variance associated with it, so...
Oh, I have to hear from the audience, right? Okay, anybody wish to address council with regard to this variance? Couple.
Good evening, your worship. I'm here to conclude with urban options and land permits. And this evening, I'm here with Christina White. She's the owner, well, her husband are the owner and developers of the property at 9542 Jensen. May I pull this down a bit? Just in COVID, we have to be careful with what we do here. Um, we thank Jamie for his overview and we would like to highlight a few of the changes that have happened, um, in this project since you saw it last in December 2019. And at the end, I'm going to answer the questions that were asked as well if that suits you. Um, some of the things that got changed in this project since the last time you viewed it where there is an addition of bicycle parking and community gardens. And that is really important to us and we're going to go into that a little bit just for your information. Um, we've also, the project has changed to aid the district housing need assessment by providing ground-oriented, uh, attractive rental housing. As you know, the discussion's been that this is planned to be rental housing. It's planned to be rental housing in the long run. Um, there's also environmental benefits to enhancing Vernon Creek. Um, I don't know if you've seen that area recently. Some of these creeks really do need a little bit of work so that they can flow in a more natural way. And that's what's going to occur on this site. Also, we wanted to bring to your attention that according to, uh, city staff, that no neighborhood concerns were raised. Now, we're not 100% certain if there's anyone standing behind us, but that's what we were under the impression. There are several items that we would like to add. Um, Jamie alluded to it already. We had some discussions before your meeting here with them in terms of the properties to the north and the south. The properties in the north is almost two acres in size and it is appropriate for doing a development. It's a nice big rectangular property that's really easy to develop. The one to the south is, um, much smaller. And because of the severe regulations, the amount of land that actually can be developed becomes very tiny. So it is best to almost remain as a single-family resident. We're kind of in between with a property that's, doesn't make any benefit to add it to the neighboring property to north and really adding one to the south has no benefit. In fact, the lake neighborhood to the north was not interested in purchasing the property at current market values and developing it. Um, we understand that it is the OCP vision. However, for this property, it is not feasible. It, we feel that it's very good in-fill development. Um, in planning, we've talked a lot about in-fill development and wanting to do things that are close to cores and things like that. And this property is going to result going from one unit to four units. And that's a really nice way of doing some in-fill development. We're providing a new development that will enhance the community. First off, I just want to indicate, uh, Christina and her husband have lived in the Okanagan for all their lives. They've been, uh, community members here in the District of Lake Country. Love living here. They lived at the site. They purchased it 16 years ago and lived there for many years. And they've been renting it for probably about the last 10 years. They've always had long-term renters there. In the past, the, um, houses, the old, the existing house has been rented and it's always been in demand. In fact, there's been times that there's about 100 people that have wanted to rent this particular house and it really is overwhelming. At that point, they thought, well, the land has a future land use that allows more development. Why not create some more rental in this area, which is both good for the community, good for the people who need to rent, and obviously good for the landowners as well. The types of renters that they have have varied in demographics. From families in transition who are building new homes to students to, um, various types of renters over the years. And they've all had a minimum of a one-year tenancy. So we know that there is demand in Lake Country for rental homes. The configuration, configuration of the units, as you've alluded to, is quite unique. There are two bedrooms on the main. And it's always, you hear this often, and I know some of us are getting there. You've seen me with crutches. Um, it's good to have bedrooms on the main where we can reach them. Many of the townhouses that are developed in this area that I've stood in front of you, they, they have garage at the bottom and you're going up multiple stairs or they, you know, wrapped in an elevator. But most of us can't port a home with an elevator and yet some of us have, uh, mobility issues and really prefer to have something on the main floor where we can access our bedrooms. The, the way the units are developed, uh, in about 912 square feet, um, they have a loft on top as well. And, um, although it's considered a bedroom here, the loft can be used as multipurpose. So we have vision that these units could be rented by families with up to three bedrooms. We imagine that people who have a home-based business might use them and live in the downstairs bedrooms and use the loft for their home-based business. We feel that as a rental unit has a lot of flexibility and, um, multipurpose ability. That's not really a word, but we're going to use it anyways tonight. Um, the streetscape, this semi-attached project is unique because it gives the household feeling of living in a single-family home, although it is an attached development. The proposed landscaping along Jensen Road enhances the streetscape and creates a peek-a-hole view into this cluster of tiny homes. It really is almost a tiny, tiny home community. The bike parking for residents and community gardens both increase the community interaction. And we know it's healthy for all of us to use our bikes, especially when we're close to the downtown, as well as working our gardens. It's anticipated that a small micro-community will develop here, which benefits the greater community and really works towards achieving council and, and the community's vision of having an integrated community with rental housing, with, um, multiple-family housing and single-family housing. It really creates, uh, uh, often what's missing in terms of development. The form is simple and reminiscent of a Main Street traditional feel that the district has embraced for its neighborhood. And being so close to the core, I feel that it's a really good fit for that. We hope that you agree and choose staff's preferred option and support our project. Now, I'm going to go off-script now and just address one of the comments that were made, your worship. There was a question about the landscaping along the south and the north, uh, sides of the property. It's anticipated or it's planned that there's going to be columnar junipers that are in that. So it creates a bit of a buffer between the single-family home to the south and the building or the property to the north, as well as opaque fencing along that. The, uh, area left on the north, make sure I'm correct here, on the north is wide enough to allow that type of vegetation to grow. And obviously, the south it is as well. That concludes our comments. If you have any questions, we're here.
Any questions then? Uh, Councillor R. Reed? Councillor Gav?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, I, I'd love to operate a tiny home. When we come, I come from the UK, my house was that size. I would call it a tiny home, so... I think they're, they're really nicely designed and I can see how we propose to use them. Um, to me, this development makes a lot of sense in terms of its location. I drove down there and if you look to the west of the property, there's the condo on the other side of Main Street. Um, it's walkable to the core, it's walkable to the school. And we were talking in a council meeting, I think, strategy session just last week, about noble development and, and, you know, in fact, we still use cars. I think this is the right development in the right place. Um, I did have a couple of questions. Uh, two questions in particular. One, when you mentioned enhancements to the flow of Vernon Creek, I know the report speaks to riparian area and new plantings, but what specifically are you going to do to the creek to improve the flow?
I'm going to let Christina get to that. Thank you. Do you want to ask the second one too?
Um, the second one is where exactly is the community garden on the plan that you've mentioned? Um, and then I do have some suggestions to the variances that we're, we're discussing.
Okay. Your worship, I'm going to answer the second question first because I can answer that one. I'm going to leave the other one to Christina. So if you look at the site plan in front of you, you see new cottage written against, uh, BCD. And then you've got the doors opening. The community garden areas are right in front of the cottages.
What, where's the drive? I can see the driveway and the carport.
The driveway and the car are between the units and right in front of the units. It's, it's a little challenging to see on the screen. Okay. So how big are the community gardens? Your worship, this is Christina White.
Your worship, councillors. Um, they are, I believe, 4.2 square meters and that is what is, uh, per the OCP.
Okay.
Um, and with regards to the flow for water, um, in Vernon Creek, uh, we're not making any changes. We're just, uh, enhancing the riparian zone, which is really important for...
Sure.
For the...
I did, I saw that from the plan. I thought that was excellent. I just, when you were mentioning improving the flow, I just... There's no improvement to the flow, it's just improved to the riparian area.
To be clear, um, Vernon Creek, we've lived there for five years and Vernon Creek does dry up.
Yeah.
So, um, we have taken out barrels, uh, barrel drums, pieces of tires, um, you know, things like that that we can do, but only when it's dry. There's no proposal. you know, things like that that we can do, but only when it's dry and there's no proposal.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. My question to the variants, it was kind of, I hope, two friendly amendments. One, I just wanted to maybe kind of ratcheting. When we talked about the variants, we mentioned the covenant for housing, rental housing. I just wondered whether we needed to put long-term rental housing to differentiate it from short-term rental housing? Just in case, for example, if our bylaws change, then the covenant still stands. But what we're specifically looking for here is long-term rental housing. So just to protect against any possible future change in the bylaw to expand the short-term rentals?
Yeah. Interesting question. I hadn't considered that. So in the RM2 zone presently, the short-term vacation rental use is not present.
Right.
So any property can rent for terms of like 30 days or longer, basically one month or longer under the current zoning. I mean, if council did so wish to clearly specify the minimum date, that could certainly be a condition of that covenant, given the fact that zoning could change in the future. It's not necessarily anticipated, but you never know. So that is certainly at council's discretion if they wanted to specify that it was purpose-built rental housing in perpetuity for a minimum tenancy of one month at a time, for example.
I just think, given we are specifying rental housing, it makes sense to clarify. To me, it makes sense to clarify specifically about what rental housing we're discussing here in the sense of we're doing this for the social good of the community and I can see the value in that. My second point would be, given we're looking at a variance and we're talking about three units here, and we've had issues before where the concept plan that comes before council is not the one that gets developed with variants. And the report mentions that you could build under this current zoning up to six to 12 houses. And with no disrespect to the applicants in any way, given we are putting covenants in there, is it possible to comment the fact or including the approval that it is as per the three units discussed with council?
Your worship, I mean, council can certainly look at covenant in more and explore that. However, the density would be confined by the existing zoning. And any change to this would be a subsequent development permit or development permit amendment, which council could consider and would have to consider. So if council does approve this development permit, you would see, like this would have to be what gets built other than if it were to come back through another subsequent amendment.
So maybe I was confused by the report because the report says that you could build up to, under the current zoning, you could build between six and 12.
Yes, so that's the potential of what the zone may present if someone was to do that. But that's just the land use rights. What is subsequent to your land use rights are development permits. And at the same time, you have to kind of marry all of the different bylaws. So, you know, you might look at, you know, if you're just looking at translating the size of the property versus the zoning bylaw, you may be able to look at that and say, maybe that's 12 units of throw housing at the maximum density possible.
Okay.
But then you start to marry that with the requirements for access. And then internal roads and setbacks. And that's where you would get probably reduced density anyways, hence the proposal for council. So if the developer did want to get greater density, it would be a subsequent development permit that council would consider.
So they couldn't build post. But the developer couldn't build six units on that with this development permit that we approved today?
No. What you see in the development permit is what the building inspectors will then refer to at the time of building permit. And if anything were to change in that regard, they would have to come back to council for a DP amendment.
Love it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and the DP is also referred to on type.
I think it's beautiful to have.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions and thank you for your presentation. Certainly, rental housing is something that we haven't really seen a lot of and we definitely need. I have a couple of questions. One was regarding visitor parking. I do know you have, it looks like the random parking, I guess, the three rows. And then the other row, is that visitor parking or is that for the fourth house? So the, in other words, one, two, three, the four, the furthest west of the parking areas.
Yeah, so our vision is that the furthest west will be for the house. And the additional one is the visitor parking. We have funded with all the visitor parking requirements, so.
Okay, and I'm pleased to see that you have an area for bike parking, bicycle parking. Also, I think the, I'm very pleased that you pointed out the differences from the last time you came. Really helps, I think, quite a bit in looking at the application. I've just had a couple of other questions. One was the basements. Are there any basements?
No, they're slum, right?
Yeah, okay. And also, impact on the surrounding, well, I think you did talk about the impact. The main home would be with people to the south. And if it's only going to be a single house, that may be not as impacting. That was my biggest concern was that there's a very small side yard setback there. But putting in shrubs there, I think, definitely would help to mitigate that. So that's, I think you've explained that well.
Yeah.
So I think that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll ask if there's anybody else who wants to address council. Thank you very much for the presentation. Sorry, Carol. Second time of asking. Third time of asking. You know, then we can take a resolution.
I'll comment.
Oh, come on.
You didn't have questions?
I need a motion.
Motion.
Counselor Carroll, Counselor Reed.
Okay, I'm not going to support this. I think we're trying to do too much with too little. I appreciate that the neighbors at this point may not want to add to the two and a half million of lands, but I think it should wait. It's too small. It's great temperature properties. It's certainly not ideal for families. You know, maybe it's ideal for single people or that sort of thing. It's miles away from an elementary school. So that we don't walk into school, it's quite, actually quite difficult to get to school from here. There's a middle school, which reasonably close, but elementary school, mild. It's just trying to do too much with too little and there's just no way that I can support this very huge one small lot similar to this that many people here didn't support, yet it was quite a bit bigger and quite a bit closer to an elementary school than this one is. So I think this lot should wait. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have Counselor Carroll.
Yeah, I would like to comment on the fact that if we were focused on young families, I don't think we'd be looking at a 912-square-meter unit. I think this basically is going to cater to a completely different demographic than Counselor Ireland has brought up. And that's that single man working in Bailey Industrial Park or, you know, at the Packer House. Or, as they mentioned in their envisioning, was a home business, single person. I don't see this as being designed or meant for a family unit. Therefore, its proximity to the school doesn't affect my decision. I agree that this is a small, little piece of property and that they're doing an awful lot with it. But I understand Jensen Road area, I lived down there myself for quite a long, quite a few years there. And I understand our desire as a community to densify that particular area because of its proximity to our services. So I probably, I am going to support this. I obviously made the motion. And I think that Counselor Ireland's points are very valid, but I'm thinking of this in a different demographic.
Thank you. Counselor Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have to say, Counselor Carroll, I am very much in agreement with you.
Oh, yeah.
I think that the size is excellent for either a couple or, you know, maybe senior or a single person. And I know that some of the housing that is right here, the municipal hall, the units, the larger units are 680 square feet, the smaller ones even smaller. I think that for this particular property, where it's located, it is not a thorough fair. It is a fairly quiet area. It's, and the people who are developing it have considered activities and transportation in the plan, all of which I think is a big positive. And we are going to see some improvement because there are a hearing area in that region which is also up west. So I'm going to be supporting it.
Thank you. Counselor Mackenzie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one that I had my reservations on from the start because I do think this is too small of a lot to be doing this much as well. So I agree with Counselor Ireland. My, I would say at some point, we might be ready for this. But I do agree that it would be nice to see this tied in with the neighboring properties and do a project that is a little better here. And that's why I was supportive of the bigger project down the road. But on this one, I'm not sure if this is the right time for this.
Okay, then Counselor Cozal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just like to say I support what Counselor Ireland said, that I don't think it's the right time or the right location for this right now. When I look at it as well, I don't, maybe it's a city thing or something, but I don't understand this back-to-back parking thing. It just, it eludes me. And when I look at this as well, I wonder what it's going to be like in the wintertime with snow removal. So I'm not much for variances, so I cannot support it at this time. Thank you.
Counselor Ireland?
Oh.
Say it.
Carol, what's that? No, no, actually, I'm busy now.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
You can go.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so the other thing that I considered, I forgot to mention this, is that all most of the lot to the south might be smaller. It effectively completely sterilizes it, becomes forever a single-family house when these two properties could have been amalgamated and done a much, a much better sized development than forcing this in with a 1.5-meter setback. You know, we call it a sarder setback, but it's really not. It's a back here setback to these three properties, 1.5 meters. So that's my arms. Well, actually smaller than my arms. So, yeah, and the negatives, it's small and we sterilize that lot to the south. I appreciate the lot to the north is big enough to do a development on, but the lot from the south will be forever low density.
Thank you. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for everyone's comments. I'm still in favor of it, I have to say. I do appreciate the work that both staff and the applicant has done because I agree when this first came to council, the zero setback was a no-go. So basically, looking at the numbers, there was originally a request to go with the equivalent of four meters of variance. And they've retained that four meters, but spread it more evenly between the north and the south side yards to give that buffer. I would differ to agree with Counselor Ireland on comparing this with the property on Okanaw Central Road West, which was, it was on a corner and a busy corner at that. And in that case, I wasn't in favor of that development. It was a lot denser than this. And also, you know, hearing from the community as well, there were a lot of concerns about safety. So I think there is a difference in placement. I went down there and I would see a difference between this and the recent one we had on, oh, I kind of felt the road name, where I think it was, where the development is in the middle of a single-family community. This one is very much across the creek from a multi-unit condo. So I can see the logic in making it close to the downtown hall, close to Main Street. If there are seniors perhaps living there rather than maybe young families, then the seniors center is then at least accessible and also, you know, shopping like Coopers and Foxies and things like that. So I can see uses for these properties outside of maybe a family. And I can certainly see seniors or, you know, single people finding a lot of value in this. And again, I have lived in a property this size quite happily with my husband. And we used to have, you know, we found at that time there was a lot of space. So there is a change, I think, in the community towards being more used to a tiny home. People not looking for large, single-family dwellings. So I would still support this application.
Thank you. Counselor Carroll. What now?
Okay, I've got to definitely agree with Counselor Cozal that some of this parking plan kind of concerns me. But I think the type of person that may want to live here is less likely to have multiple vehicles, more likely to have single vehicles. The fact that this developer has addressed our previous concerns, changed the setbacks to the best of their ability, increased bike parking to enhance that type of lifestyle, I have to support this development because, well, Lake Tahoe, I actually used to live in those little lake frames up above Wood Lake there when we rode there. They were excellent for a guy like me when I was single and young. So I see a large need in this community for that type of rental and in that price range. So I take into account what both you and Counselor Ireland have said, and I agree, they're valid points. But I think the pros outweigh the cons in this particular case, so I'm going to continue to support.
Okay, go ahead. Counselor Ireland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not objecting to the size of the units. You know, you keep bringing up the, I raised my kids in a house that was 450 square feet on the main floor. And it was also not quite as nice as these would be because it was a hundred-year-old church. But I'm not objecting to the size of the building, but we all lived in all these small places. But we could all walk on our back door and have a little bit of room. You've got a road, you've got your front, you know, what would normally be your front garden called, being called a community garden. You know, it's not the size of the building, the size of the building is great. And it's great for these type of people, but three of these side by side on that little lot sterilizing the other lot, it's post-stamped development as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I'm going to have a say and then we'll have a vote. But I certainly support this. And again, the size of the building is such that it's suitable for that. There were a lot of families raised out of the Second World War. Houses that were built under the Veteran's Land Act that were 800 to 900 square feet. A family of six with one bathroom in those days. But, and they walked to school a lot farther than what this is from pre-hub year. So I don't see a problem there. I can understand perhaps there's a better use sometime down the road. But keep in mind, we have seen redevelopment where a $30 million house on the lakeshore is knocked down to build a $11 million house on the lakeshore. So if somebody wants to really concentrate in downtown or town-centered property, redevelopment could happen in 30 years as Counselor Ireland is anticipating. But I think it's, we need long-term rental housing right now. So I certainly support this design and this concept. And I'll ask for a vote. Those in favor? Both? Counselors Ireland, Mackenzie, and Cordova opposed, motion carries. All right, we're done. Next one. Another variant, I think.
Thank you very much, your worship. Please pull up the presentation here. The next presentation will be from our planning technician, Michael Charny, who joined us earlier this year and will be presenting this file. This is like an introduction to Michael, if you haven't met him.
Thank you for the introduction. Hello, Mayor Council. I would presenting, presenting a development variance application, DVP 2019-001. The zone name for this property is Director Control Zone 5 or DC5, Crystal Waters. OCP designation is urban residential for the land. Civic address is Stratolot 15 at 18451 Crystal Waters Road. And the proposal is for variances to the side yard and two variances to the minimum lot area. is for variances to the side yard and two variances to the minimum lot area. The location of the property, like I said, is in Crystal Waters. It is near the northern boundary of Lake Country, and the property is approximately 0.05 hectares large. Here's an area photograph showing an existing duplex on the site. And this photo just showing what that looks like from street level. And then a site plan, which is a little difficult to tell, showing Strata Lot 15 in the darker black quarter, and I'll refer to this in a moment. So the site contains a duplex, as mentioned, which is within the Crystal Waters strata. The duplex was built and finalized under a building permit in 2017. Construction began in 2018, and occupancy was granted in 2019. The owner is seeking a variance for side yard setback and two variances for the minimum lot area in order to subdivide the property in the near future. Since this building is already constructed and in compliance with zoning law and other municipal bylaws, granting the variances would have no physical effect or alterations on the property itself, but rather just allow for subdivision to occur. Strata lot, our strata subdivision will allow for the duplex to be split into two lots, each one for each of the two dwellings, and this would allow for the owner and applicants to sell one of these pieces of land with one of the units of the duplex. Here's just the summary of the variances requested with a map showing the variances. As mentioned, for side yard setback from 1.5 meters to 0 meters, this is illustrated by a line going through the property. And then two variances for minimum lot area, one for future Strata Lot 41, from 450 square meters to 255 square meters. And then for Strata Lot 42, from 450 square meters to 254.6 square meters. And then again, here's a larger image of the variances I mentioned. And as you note, there is an orange dot to the northwest of the property where this photo is taken from, just illustrating again, the existing duplex being subdivided, or asking for variances for future subdivision. And then I believe the orange highlighted parcel or going unit is the one that is to be sold off. So staff, the first step option is for this variance for side yard setback and minimum area to be approved. And the other option is for this to be denied.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions for staff? Michael? Counselor Reed? Are you gearing up?
I am. Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Can I just ask, they look like there was a for sale sign out there. So when it's, when you say it's to be sold, is that already underway in anticipation of this variance being granted?
I've been told that the process is, or they're in the middle of the process, but I think it's better if we ask the applicants to speak to that.
Yeah, I can hear.
You have the consent to speak to that?
We need a question.
Um, there's a, you were made, the reason for the subdivision is that you were looking to sell half of the duplex, and I just noticed when I drove past.
We need your name for the.
Yeah, sure. My name is Craig Houston.
Um, I just noticed there was a for sale sign when I drove past.
Yeah, the, the development was always anticipated to be a duplex, so two units. So yeah, one would always be sold.
So are you in the, just because there is a for sale sign, are you in the sale process?
Absolutely. We've been in the sale process for a year, over a year.
Right. And are you currently in an offer situation or not yet?
There has been an accepted offer.
Right, okay.
So this is, this is something that's happened through the process. We, I've never built anything in my life, so it was very surprising to me, the process that we've had to go through, not communicated by our builder, by our designer, by our real estate agent, that we needed to subdivide these properties. We just thought that was all already occurred. It was zoned as being a, I don't know if the word is right, zoning, but it was set up to be a duplex right from the start in this, in this community of Crystal Waters.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead. Don't run away. There may be other questions.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Kozak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that you spent some time at this site, and this building is not out of the norm for any of the other buildings that are there. So I don't know how you slipped through the cracks, but it's nothing different than any of the other spots. I personally wouldn't want to, no offense to you guys, to me, I probably have a great life to myself, but I'd rather have lands than a house that encompasses my entire lot. But that is what the whole development is. So there's nothing here that's out of the norm to anything else, and I would fully support this.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
That's a very, very good comment, in my mind. There's been precedents that in this community, units to the, it would be to the east, and more closer to the water have all been subdivided already. There's only one other project, and there's actually one beside us in the north that's also been subdivided. So there's only one other duplex in the entire community of Crystal Waters that has not been subdivided, and that's only because the owner has not proceeded with that.
Thank you. Counselor Ireland, for the staff or?
Yeah, just a question for staff.
Okay. You can take your seat now. Thank you.
I'm, certainly, I'm not opposed to this. I just, my question is, if we were starting from scratch, right? So this is a lot. This, would this house be able to be built with the setbacks that it has, the setbacks that the variance has, would this house be able to be built?
Thank you for your question. I don't have the zoning specifications directly in front of me, but also as Craig said, this house was built to the specifications of the DC5 zone. So I believe, as is, it meets all the requirements of the DC5 zone and all the regulations.
And it's.
Despite it being such a.
I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I just want to know. It was a, it was a direct control zone?
A direct control zone, yes.
Okay. So was, outside of that direct control zone, no, is the answer. That this house would not be able to be built outside of the direct control zone. Okay, thank you.
And then, this is, this is Strata Development here as well?
I know Strata's getting to the.
All right. Thanks. You want to comment?
Yeah, I'm Claire Grubach. Hi, I'm Vanessa Craig, and we own this property. It is our understanding that had the house been one unit, 5,000 square feet on its own, there was no problem. It was one we wanted to subdivide, then the two properties, you know, so we're actually one of the smallest places in the community, you know, when you look at some of the homes that are in there. So I don't know if that answers your question, but it was our understanding that as one unit, the house was fine the way it was.
No, no, yeah, I'm not against your proposal at all. I just wanted to know, because there's quite a few variances involved. You know, I personally certainly don't like to see a property as big as this with as little land as it has.
Yeah.
And not your fault. It's the way it is. I'm not objecting to your proposal at all. I just wanted to be clear that this wouldn't be able to happen in the rest of the community. And Crystal Waters is a special case.
Yeah, and of course, that seems to be the case.
Yeah. I just wouldn't like to see it anymore, to be honest. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor McKenzie, do you have a question for?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I support this, seeing that the rest of that meeting is done besides that one. So I can understand where they are on this one.
Anybody else? Counsel wish to address? Oh.
Sorry, again.
Counselors to, okay. Counselor Reed?
Sorry, I just had a question, two questions. Has the strata had any feedback on this development? Have they made any comment on it?
Yeah, so that you, that's a very good question. So we had to have this subdivision approved by Australia, and we did efforts strating last year already. And that precedent has been set. As my husband mentioned, there are several other units in the, you know, and they've all been, so the strata has approved it, yeah.
Right, okay. And I think everything was considered on its own merits. But that's great to know. And then, how, can I just ask one more question? How is the house currently used? Is it, do you rent out half of it, or do you?
No, we live in part of it.
Right.
And then we've been trying to sell.
Okay.
The other halfway from the beginning, that was always our intention.
Right, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Neither Counsel Resolution?
Your Worship, you need to ask for members of the.
Oh, three times, yeah. Second time of asking, third time of asking. Done. Thank you. Counselor McKenzie and Counselor Kozak. Those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Actually, please.
Rogers Tower.
Also, you're all.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Provided a very, very brief presentation, because really this is the opportunity for council to receive a presentation from Rogers and their, and their agent, who will be presenting a proposal with respect to a cell service tower located in O'Yama, property at 15531 Sommo Road. The property is currently zoned A1 agriculture, and is in the OCP for agriculture. However, it's got some history to it as far as a property, and the subject property's name neighborhood is, I'm not sure council will be familiar with it. The location is just on the east side of the ESMS and towards like the Sommo Road industrial area. And the subject property is just over 22 acres inside. See the aerial of the property? It's a little bit difficult to see here, but I'll see if I can do this without accidentally.
Do the.
Yeah. Let's see. Okay. I've been trying to do a Greg Buckles trick where I highlight. There we go. If Greg's listening, thank you, Greg. So the property is located along these boundaries, not highlighted in the map. It is surrounded in the area of the former Sommo, Sommo Road, and a substantial amount of industrial development as well as gravel extraction in the area, just for context. So the proposal has come before the district, understanding that there is a service need in Rogers' perspective, which their agents speak to. And this highlights, you know, different services in and around the area, but then a little bit of a need to expand services in and around here, near the ESMS in O'Yama. This image can be illustrated more, whereas the current service coverage will be highlighted in this red circle. The proposal would enhance the coverage, and you can see the enhanced coverage covered throughout the other purple and the other blue, kind of a heat mapping in that area. This is a view from the Rogers proposal of the property, taken from, looks like Google Earth, and a artist rendering highlighting it. And so, again, I'll maybe use that red highlighter trick. But there, I think, is the artist rendering addition to what we're looking at.
I might get paid for that artist.
I, the district paid zero for that. So, but the agent for Rogers can certainly expand on the proposal. The preferred option, obviously, you know, and this is an interesting proposal, because the district certainly doesn't deal with a number of these. This is pretty unique to the district. We do not have what the Federation, PAG, and municipalities would suggest, to be like protocol agreements, or like a policy in place for how these processes would typically play out. But in, the consideration of that is also municipal jurisdiction. At the end of the day, the jurisdiction for these matters, the decision-making power lays with the, lies with the federal government. And, and so it's important to understand that our role here is to provide advice, feedback, context, councils, obviously, thoughts on this matter. Staff do understand that there is a need for this service in the community in terms of expanding service areas. And, you know, it's even highlighted in the proposal, the amount of 911 calls that are made are now, it's approximately, it's about 80% made on cellular devices, not online lines. So, you know, there's, there's the opportunity to enhance the service for the community in that regard, with, with not too many negative community effects in terms of our jurisdiction. Obviously, we can't comment in terms of like the health and safety components, which sometimes get brought up around these. I do know that council was apprised of some of the community feedback within this proposal, that they deal with that. Now, very much for Rogers would be best suited to address those matters. Now, in terms of getting a full assessment of the public interest in this regard, staff have recommended that council could concur, could concur with the proposed location at the property. But that further that we suggest as a, as a community to Rogers Telecommunications to seek input from other interested permanent partners, including but not limited to the ALC, because the property is agricultural in land use, however not necessarily in practice, but is also within the ALR. But then also reach out to the Ministry of Environment and the Ministry of Forest Lines and Natural Resources Operations. So that is part of the proposed solution. The alternative to that would be that council does not concur. But as I mentioned, our jurisdiction is, we're not the decision-makers in terms of where this proposal ends up. Council does so wish. Council capacity a resolution to hear from the agent for Rogers Telecommunications who is here this evening, Chad Marla.
Good evening, Your Worship and council members. My name's, my name's Chad Marla, and I am here representing Rogers. If you need an address, no? All right. So I didn't prepare a presentation on my.
That's all right. We already.
PowerPoint. But I can, can I use the arrows to go back? Yeah. Yeah. That's sort of the visual. I'll go through a few things here. Maybe I'll talk about the need of the tower. Really, if you have a question, just feel free to jump in. Rogers does have a couple of, like, three towers in the area servicing Lake Country right now. They're not exactly in Lake Country, but they service Lake Country. There is a need to improve service in O'Yama area. That's why I've been proposed this. So the towers there now are to the northeast, southeast, and northwest, and they're all about eight-ish kilometers away from O'Yama area. So the new site in this area, and it is, I should mention, it's for Rogers and Telus, Telus has agreed to add equipment to it to service the area as well. So it will probably service roughly, you saw that, the heat map that was referred to here, it'll probably, it's not just targeted into the map on the right. Yeah, everybody's right in the thing. It's the one with the most purple within the circle. I mean, that's the targeted area of improvement, and it's not just out in the, on the road or in the back country or something like that. The cell phone companies want to ensure that there's good service in people's homes. And it's become more and more important. It's almost seen as a basic utility now to have good wireless service in any, you know, decent-sized community. I consider Lake Country a decent-sized community, and O'Yama, oh, yeah, for a while. So and it is an important part of a community's safety network as well. So they want to make sure that there's good in-building service. These maps are kind of showing the improvement of in-building service. There will be expanded areas beyond this and on the other side of the lake that will be improved on the service. So I'd say it's probably two and a half to three kilometers away from the cell site, but the service will be improved. So basically, the cell phone company, in this case Rogers, identifies an area by knowing that they have core service in it, largely from drive test data that they have. And a lot, a lot of it is from customer complaints. There's a lot of customer complaints in this area, whether it's the traveling public or people that live there. Rogers gets the complaints, and they target areas to improve it.
Counsel, go on with that question.
I may be jumping ahead. In the paper, we'd be reading about 5G and 4G. Can you tell me what this service is going to be?
Yeah.
And further to that, can you talk a little bit about the location as far as distance from other houses?
Yeah.
And the impact on people that live in that area?
Sure. Yeah. As far as 4G and 5G, this is a 3G and 4G tower. That's what the technology that will be on it. Later this year, the government is pushing off radio waves 4 and 5G. That'll happen towards the end of the year, and then the companies will upgrade their networks at that point, sometime in the years after that.
Depending on the years.
Yeah. Yeah, well, where. You know, they'll probably be targeting on major centers like Vancouver and bigger cities before they move out to here to deploy 5G, probably in a few years. before they move out to here to deploy 5G, probably in a few years before that happens. I know there's a lot of controversy over 5G when it comes to health and safety, and a lot of it is misunderstood. I think the radio waves and the frequency used at 5G actually penetrates less and travels less distance, it penetrates a human body less, but we need more infrastructure out there to deploy a vibrant 5G network. So, these big towers, they might have 5G on it, but to have a very good, robust 5G network, you need more antennas closer to where people live, work, and play. So, there'd be multiple antennas down the street, maybe it's on streetlights or utility poles or something like that. It's bringing the infrastructure much closer to where people are, and I think there's a lot of concern around that, and that's kind of stemming from the 5G discussion. In this instance, I think the closest home is probably 4, 500 yards away. It's obviously a very large property, it's 20-plus acres, it's industrial in nature, yes, it's agricultural. We often use agricultural lands, the Agricultural Land Commission allows the use. We do have to get a fill permit in this instance. I don't think any fills can be taken on or off the site because it's a ground life of operation. But this site actually does lend itself fairly well, so that it's very well set back from neighboring homes and uses, but it also will not interrupt any light use from a residential home or anything of that nature. It's got some trees around it, the tower's, well, it's 100 feet high or 30 meters. It seems big, it's quite small for a cell tower. So, it'll kind of be almost below the tree lines to the backs or in and off to both the north and south sides. So, when we do look at site and cell towers, we often look at, is it impacting a view from a residential home or something? In this case, it's not. And so, we find that we fill it, it's a very good location for it.
Counselor McKenzie, you have a question as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your clarification on a few things. I'm the local councillor for that area and live looking right at that. So, I live behind the school, so I definitely had a number of concerned parents that were troubled with power being so close and what it's going to do to kids and so on, right? So, understandably so, right? There's enough bad media out there, and it does take a little bit of the clarifying what actually this is, right? And so, you know, after your lengthy email that you sent out, I take it that was from yourself, right?
Yeah, probably.
So, that there was, you know, definitely answered a few questions for me. That area is very, that's cell reception, there's no question there. So, like I say, I just, definitely there is a few concerned people around that area just because it is, you know, as far as we say it is, it's still, it's going to be sitting right in front of them. So, you know, I understand their concerns, so I just wanted to say thanks for that email, just clarifying that there.
Okay, no problem. Maybe I could elaborate on that just a little bit when it comes to health and safety. And I know, yeah, I do recall the email you probably sent out, and I think the school's 1.2 kilometers away or something like that, which is a considerable distance. When, you know, this stuff, when it comes to health and safety, it's where everybody else can have it. And they have something called Safety Code 6. It's been developed and it's been developed so that the carriers have to sit 100 times below that. And in actuality, this thing will be thousands of times below the law of the limits when it's at the school or anybody's home in this case nearby. It's very low energy that's coming out of this. Most communities and most Canadians, I'd say 90% of Canadians, live within, let's say, 300 or 400 meters of cell site. There's literally tens of thousands across Canada. That was just invading in Kelowna before this, and there's 40-plus cell sites just servicing the city of Kelowna. Here, you're, you've probably got one actually in Lake Country right now, maybe two in the future, hopefully. But the technology has been up there for a long time, people have been living near them, probably not knowing it that they're living near cell sites, but it's very common to live near them, and it's very safe.
Yeah. Take care. All right. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chad. I just have a query about the amount of public engagements that you guys have had on this, because I noticed in your report that you published it in the Okanagan Advertiser. That doesn't circulate in Lake Country. That covers, oh, yeah, Endebi, Armstrong, and Sponching Valley. So, I, we have the Lake Country calendar, so I just have a, I would like to have seen it advertised in a newspaper that is actually received by the residents, because nobody will have got that notice here, because the newspaper doesn't serve Lake Country.
Yeah, we probably, I mean, we worked with staff on the notification. I should talk about the process, because in, and staff mentioned that you guys don't have a policy to deal with telecommunications applications.
Yeah, I just would like, I don't know how it ended up, given that it was in the report.
I'm not entirely sure. Typically, we use the local paper, we asked staff what the local paper is. We ended up adding a development sign, which we normally don't add to these applications, so the property had a development sign, so people do live near it.
Biogram or paper? I mean, it's not high-traffic area.
Well, I think that's the good thing about this is that it's a large one that isn't high-traffic, but I don't know how it ended up in that paper. And all the neighboring parcels were notified of the proposal as well.
But, okay, so, I just think if it's in the report that says this is how Rogers did their public consultation, I just think it leaves us open to challenge for members of the community when they read the report and say, well, how did the council make their decision? And we've got it saying that this is how Rogers does the public consultation, they put it into a newspaper and they allowed a month for comments and things like that, and it's the wrong newspaper. I just feel that we haven't necessarily followed the processes diligently for our community, rightly or wrongly. We may still get no comments, but it is an issue in terms of our process, and I would say an issue in terms of your process as well.
Chad, I, I read that, but I took that as an example of the communication that Telus didn't necessarily mean.
Rogers.
Pardon?
Rogers.
Rogers, sorry. But when I was looking at all of the material and where what you did for public communication, part of it as an example was a newspaper ad, you're taking that.
It says Rogers has also placed an advertisement in the Okanagan Advertising Newspaper. This notification is to provide the opportunity to obtain information regarding the proposal, ask questions that provide comments. The closing period for comments to be received by Rogers is June the 1st, 2020. And the Okanagan Advertiser on their website says serving Armstrong, Endebi, and Sponching Valley. So, I hear, but I believe it was written as that this is what we've done, that this specific cell tower in Oyama.
This is what we've done, yes.
Only in a paper that isn't distributed here?
I'm not, I'm not too, I don't know what papers are distributed.
I just, I'm not against, I just think that process should be followed appropriately.
That's fine. There's a lot of other things on that page that have nothing to do with the cell tower.
Yes, staff certainly wouldn't have advised advertising on a newspaper that isn't in Lake Country, but at the same time, staff does not guide the consultation process for telecommunications towers.
Maybe it's a typo, that's the other option, it could have been written, yeah.
Oh, the counselor, all right.
I move that we concur.
A second. Are you done?
I'm done.
I.
That's what our staff request is that we concur.
More discussion? I'm a mover and second. Counselor Gallow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could support this if the concurrence could be, if the motion could say subject to ensuring that we use a local newspaper to solicit local feedback and make sure that we can follow that process before sending our approval.
Counselor Scott?
Well, I believe that the message has been received by Rogers' agent over there. I believe that if it was incorrectly advertised, I believe that that was an oversight and not an intention. And I believe that after having this conversation with council, that Rogers has received the message. I don't believe an amendment is necessary. I think that an amendment would go along to the federal government and really just confuse the issue. I think that we should stick with our concurrence and that's all.
Counselor Reed?
I would like to propose, from my side, I think we should defer until the appropriate process has been followed, that's not making a decision, that's just allowing Rogers to rectify an innocent mistake and allow it to be advertised in the local community. It may delay us by maybe a month, but I can't see that being a problem, and then we know all boxes have been ticked, and we've heard from everybody in the community, and the community has had a chance to receive the information.
Okay. The motion to defer.
We have a motion on the table, your worship. And the motion is to.
Concur.
Get soft chime, you know, staff, yes.
Yes.
But you need to vote on this one unless.
The motion to defer.
I think that's superseded.
Takes precedent. Motion to defer doesn't take precedent.
We don't have a second.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah?
No, you have a motion on the floor, mover and a second, so that motion must be carried or deleted, or an amendment to that main motion must be made. So, I recommend that either vote on it.
I can't take another motion, but I can take a motion for amendment.
Or you can withdraw the motions currently on the table with both the mover and the second.
You want to withdraw?
No, the motion stands.
Then I'll call the favor on the motion. Those in favor?
Well, there may be an amendment.
Oh. I can take an amendment to the motion, it's not withdrawn, so either vote on it or amend it. You want to make an amendment?
Well, I did propose an amendment, which was to approve this, subject to receiving no opposition after advertising this in a local paper as per the due process. A local Lake Country paper as per due process. In this case, that appears not to have happened. I mean, it was just an error, obviously, but it appears not to have happened, and I'm only going by what we've had in front of us. We have to trust that the reporting we're given is correct. And if it's not here, surely, as councillors doing due diligence, we would look after our citizens.
All right.
Your worship, I need to clarify here, because we need to understand, is just to rectify the advertising or to actually rectify the advertising and receive feedback into council?
Yes. So, it doesn't just mean, you know, it's not just for show, it is actually to do the correct advertising, and then if there is feedback for us, to be brought back to council. Obviously, the due process didn't happen, as far as we know. I mean, we are looking at the report that was given to us, we have to trust that it's correct. And so, I'm saying, let's just get the correct information, make sure that we're doing due diligence as a council. We're not talking about a year, we're talking a short.
Yeah. I hear from.
Sorry, do we have a second for that?
All right, Counselor Reed, second.
As long as we listen to what's said.
So, there's, the amendment is, I'm still not certain, the amendment is to what? To do what?
Your worship's a corporate officer.
Yes, maybe she's got something to tackle.
So, I have this amendment would be subject to receiving no opposition after advertising a local Lake Country newspaper for due process, and then that feedback is to come back to a council meeting to be considered.
I think instead of forward due process, it would be as per due process.
Jimmy?
Your worship, it does seem somewhat conflicting with the main motion, which is to concur and to forward it on to provincial agencies. So, there may be a need to, I would deal with the motion that is on the floor or to, or to subsequently bring forward another amendment. However, one thing I would maybe suggest to council with respect to any amendment is if the council is to request that, putting conditions on the type or the content of the feedback that you receive prior to receiving it may not result in you ever receiving it again, if you know what I mean, as opposed to just seeking the feedback.
I think, your worship, that with respect to the nature of the amendment, Mr. McHugh is actually correct, should be a separate motion. So, probably it would be prudent to dispose of the first motion first, and then if it doesn't pass, then you can, you can have another motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, the motion is to concur with. Speak to it. Counselor Carroll?
Now, the motion that I seconded, I would like to stick with, and that is simply to concur. Counselor Gallow and Counselor Reed have considered themselves correctly so with proposed process. I'm not convinced that there was a mistake made, but, you know, what if I don't? I don't have facts to say that. But my question is, if we're looking out for the citizens of Lake Country, if we care about the citizens of Lake Country, let's get them that essential service called cell service that they don't have right now. And in my opinion, as the agent has said, there's no better place in this community for that tower, there's no less attrusive place for that tower. And as far as public input goes, I know that Counselor McKenzie's received an awful lot, and he's directed his questions towards the agency and received what I consider valid answers. So, in my opinion, anything else that we add to this particular motion simply confuses the issue and delays the progress.
Thank you. Counselor Cota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing that I'd like to add to this as well is that Facebook, social media, Lake Country BC1 community on July 3rd, it was brought up, a resident brought up the fact that this cell tower was going in, and there was quite a bit of talk about it on that day, and it continued for a week or two, and none of those people are here, so I think that we should just leave it as it is and support it and go with it and be on our way.
Maybe they're not here because they didn't see the advertisement, and who are they here?
Your worship, I hate to just intrude myself, but I, the benefit of text messaging, my search function wasn't working on my computer, so I wasn't able to search the report as well. Our manager of communications and governmental affairs, I might be butchering this title, but our manager, Matt Vator, has informed me that it is in fact, I think that it was advertised in two places, and the letter on it, I believe page five of the report indicates it was also advertised in the paper on April 30th.
Thank you.
On April 30th in the Lake Country calendar. Yeah, so I did want to clarify that, because that was something that I was, also that I had read and then my search for it, I was questioning myself. So, thank you for your patience.
Anyway, motion on the floor is to concur. Very. Those in favor? Motion to vote, not a vote, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. We learned this is a moral procedure.
I'll never get back to that. No, it's gone forever.
That's not a pinch.
Gone forever.
I need a little tax before, sorry.
Oh, I think we missed one. We had an information on one. On the COVID-19.
COVID-19.
Oh, yes.
So, I just have a couple of things to add to the information on the report that So I just have a couple of things to add to the information on the report that's in front of council regarding the financial impacts of COVID-19. Specifically, I want to touch on the tax collection. So at the time of writing this report, as you'll move in the report, it said that there was approximately between 25%, 26% of taxes collected. There's been a lot of discussion in the media recently around tax collection with our partners up and down the valley. Everybody else, I think, maintained the July 2nd due date, certainly in the central Okanagan Regional District. Their tax collection rates were around the 80% mark. Our tax collection due date, of course, is September 30th as set by council. We have a couple of large landlords that own a number of pieces of property that withheld payment, obviously, for financial reasons, probably, you know, that are advantageous to them to withhold tax payments. And we haven't seen those tax payments, but I'm sure that we will prior to the due date. I expect that our collection rate will likely be similar to those that we've seen in the valley, around that 80% mark, which doesn't cause me great concern for the district's finances at this time. Should that number change or should there be other issues? I think we'll be back in front of council to talk about that a little bit more. But at this time, I'm not overly concerned with that. There was a report recently by the Government Finance Officers Association that came out and really talked about what the impacts of this epidemic has been on government resources. We've certainly heard reports from across this province of municipalities losing massive amounts of money and severely impacting them. I'd suggest that those municipalities are probably more reliant than the district on things like parking fees and user fees, other things, anything else other than property taxation or highly reliant on property taxation. Our property taxation, as I indicated, is 100% collectible under legislation through a three-year period. So we're not hugely impacted in the short term. So what does that mean for the long term? I think in the long term, it absolutely means we're going to have to sit and consider what our five-year financial plan looks like and what increases in our five-year financial plan look like and how we can smooth that out for people. I think that is probably the longer-term impact of this. The shorter-term impact for the district is not significant. So as you saw in the report, we're currently sitting at about a $90,000 deficit. That amount certainly can change depending on further restrictions, whether the government decides to roll back to the phases that we're currently in, we close facilities again or anything like that. Our biggest lost revenue, of course, was the arena and our curling club. We're expected to be on track for the rest of the year for that. Certainly rentals are there if the phases hold and we are still permitted to keep that facility open. There wasn't much else that I was going to tell council. I'm happy to answer any questions. If anyone has any questions regarding that.
Any questions? Thank you.
Excellent. I shall move on to the next one. So the next one is deferring the 2020 tax sale. This was one of the provisions provided through the provincial government in their emergency measures to local governments to be able to defer the tax sale. Lake Country has not historically had a large number of properties in tax sale. We'll deal with one just after this report, but we haven't historically had. Some of that is due to the hard work of our tax clerks. Our tax clerks usually undertake quite a process through the months of August and September to be able to deal with properties, phoning people and tracking them down and getting them to pay their taxes. Deferring this 2020 tax sale isn't dealing with the issues that these people have had for the last three years paying their taxes, but I can tell you that it's certainly lessening the load on our tax clerk and it is providing some relief to those people to not have to worry about tax sale in the year when they may have other issues related to COVID. So with that, current staff auction is that the 2020 Annual Tax Sale Differral Bylaw, 11242020, be read a second and third time.
Counselor Aaron, Counselor Carroll, discussion. Those in favor? Those, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Okay, my last one, and then I'm going to get somebody else up here to talk to you a little bit. Extending the tax sale redemption period. So regardless of COVID-19, I probably would have propped this one forward to council anyway. Under legislation, we are permitted to extend our tax sale redemption date by one year if we are the purchaser of a tax sale. This property was sold at tax sale last year after a number of years of being held out of the tax sale at the 11th hour. We normally saw somebody in here to pay the delinquent taxes and take this property out of tax sale at about 9:50 a.m. on the morning of the tax sale. Unfortunately, no one showed up last year and we were unable to contact anyone. So this property went for tax sale. Nobody showed up for our tax sale to purchase properties last year, which is also a first for us. The municipality was deemed the purchaser at tax sale and have got time. Because of the complications with the ownership on this property, of course, we went through a substituted service through our lawyers. Because of those complications, staff are suggesting that we extend our redemption period, give us the most time possible to be able to contact this family and make sure that they are absolutely clear on the consequences of tax sale. So with that, staff's recommendation is that tax sale redemption extension by law, 11232020, be read a first, second, and third time.
Counselor Campbell, Counselor Mackenzie, those in favor? Both, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I will call our financial analyst, Richard Wagner, to talk about Lake Country Senior Housing.
I just wish it goes on.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So tonight, staff are bringing forth a request for council decision regarding the financial commitment made to Lake Country Senior's Housing in 2004. So a quick recap, at the December 14th, 2004 regular council meeting, council confirmed the commitment to a 25-unit senior housing development located at 9509 Main Street. Development's known as Blue Heron Villa. The December 2004 resolution stated that council waived DCCs and provide property tax exemption to a maximum of 10% of project costs or $510,000, whichever was less. Subsequent calculations indicated that $510,000 was the lesser value. So to date, Lake Country Senior's Housing has received $508,653 in assistance based on this council resolution. So tonight, staff is just requesting direction regarding any perceived shortfall in assistance provided as well as the future financial assistance provided to Lake Country Senior's Housing. Staff has provided council preferred option as well as three alternative options. And after reviewing the district's property tax exemption policy and reaching out to Lake Country Senior's Housing, it's recommended that Lake Country Senior Housing be considered for a multi-year tax exemption in alignment with our current tax exemption by law, 1069. This will be, of course, subject to completion and approval of a formal application process later this year. And I'll turn it over to council for discussion.
All right. Any questions for our financial advisor? Counselor Carroll. Just trying to wrap my head around this.
Yes.
The whole thing. Since 2004, we've been subsidizing the taxes on this Blue Heron building.
Through your worship, yeah, that's correct. They've been part of a separate tax exemption by law since this time.
And the agreement says that once we get to 10% or $510,000, whichever is less, that that funding would stop?
Through your worship, again, that was our commitment amount at that time. It didn't indicate that, it indicated that we wouldn't go over, that we'd seek council direction after that time.
Okay, and so we've come to that time and now we have, as a council, have to decide and discuss whether or not to continue that type of support because the letters that have gotten in your report here indicate that the leadership in that group suggests that there's no way they can deal with that.
That's, as indicated in our letter, that's what they've said.
Okay, well, I don't see any reason to continue what we've always done, but that's for other councils. Do not continue or?
To continue.
I'd like to hear from Todd, who's on there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks for that presentation, Richard. Being part of the fair society, I get to look at their books and stuff and they do run a pretty tight ship. And they definitely run into issues once in a while and they're definitely in a little bit of one right now. So if I'm correct here, I haven't seen their breakdown of the numbers like you did here. You can, on the report, it says it's $20,090.3 for 2020. That's actually the amount that we're...
That's the municipal and the other jurisdictional tax combined. So there's one column there that would indicate just the municipal portion.
Okay, and then what's the other taxes?
The other taxes that we remitted to the provincial province and the jurisdictional district.
The school district.
Okay, so it's, is it costing us $20,000?
It would be the municipal tax column, $13,194.
So that's the actual benefit?
Yes.
Okay.
The cost to our taxpayers.
Okay, just so that we understand exactly what that is. So for them to apply for this, then we would be giving them the advantage of around that $13,000 mark?
They would receive the $20,000 in assistance, but the impact to our taxpayers?
Two bucks?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So I do support this based on, I know that the good work these guys do and they have a lot of people in there that have issues that they're not, they need assistance as far as places to rent. So I'm definitely in support of this one.
Motion to the effect. Continue?
I have a question.
I have a motion on the floor and we'll do discussion.
File a motion to move this then?
Option A.
Option A.
Counselor Campbell? Counselor Reed, question?
So it's just a financial question. The, I forgive if I wrote this wrong, but the $20,000, that's the gross property tax, assuming there wouldn't be any, would there be any homeowners?
Grants?
Yeah.
Not grants.
Not in this case, okay.
Low-cost rents.
Okay. But then if we compare it with maybe seniors who are living in the community who own their own homes, they would be eligible for those homeowner grants and an increase in assistance as well. So I'm speaking in terms of fairness to everybody. Yeah.
Again, it would depend on specific properties, but of course, there could be potential differences.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Scott.
I'm not sure who the question could be answered by, but we have a tax exempt list in our district that includes any churches and schools and things like that. And recently, in the last year, we removed one of those properties from that list and I'm sure we have the ability to add properties to that list. So in your option A, you suggest that this arrangement that we're thinking about making tonight would expire in the year 2023. And I'm wondering...
That's a multi-year.
Yeah, so what I'm wondering is why we don't just add the Blue Heron Villa to the tax exempt list and have no term?
Through your worship, so that's, option A is requesting council's guidance to do that. It would be added to that tax exemption at a later date this year when the bylaw is brought forward.
Oh, I misread that. I'm...
Thank you.
I, sorry, just to add to that, that we do have a number of properties that are permissively exempt, that are not permissively exempt, that are statutory exempt from year to year, but the property, like the other ones that we permissively exempt, doesn't fall under a statutory exemption. It falls under a permissive exemption. So we have to add it to our bylaw.
Okay. Counselor Campbell?
Just a question, because I'm not very familiar with the meeting, Mayor. Do those people rent or do they own them?
I, it's, I don't believe they own them, but it's all coordinated through Interior Health and they have an application process to go through.
Exactly. I didn't know that. And maybe Counselor Mackenzie would know a little more about the details of how that all works.
Yeah, it's based on income and they are rentals. There's nobody that owns one of those. That's all applied through for Interior Health as opposed to just...
Counselor, I have to answer.
I would just like to follow through with what I'm saying, which, just to get that clarification. I think that rentals are so much needed, especially people with significant issues. And it really seems important to me that we have a facility like this in our community. It is, I think, a good investment in tax dollars.
Thank you. Counselor Aaron?
Yeah, after just having placed my dad into a place similar to this, it's called assisted living. It takes 75% of your income. In case my dad's income, it's pretty low. But it's a great place to live. He certainly couldn't live on his own. And we need to look after the seniors around the community, me and them. To me, this is no different than an exception to a church. In fact, I think it's more important. So I fully support this.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion. Those in favor? I have. Both, motion carries. Thank you. Good job. Thanks, Richard. And council advised a meeting restart. Who's doing that?
Ray.
Ray, okay.
Thank you, your worship. So the council has recently, or previously, council had passed a resolution authorizing the agricultural advisory committee to continue their committee meetings in order to meet their mandate. This resolution, seeing we move to phase three, is recommending that council's remaining committees also be permitted to meet if required. So the resolution sets out that meetings are only to be held for the purposes of discussing businesses, discussing business, that electronic means are to be used primarily. District staff will help support that. We can use Microsoft Teams for those committees if they would like to hold a meeting. And of course, the meetings must comply with all the provincial health orders and work safety requirements. So we have had several committees request that they do have a meeting in order to continue business in the district.
Ray? You have a, you're up.
Move.
Second. Counselor, any discussion? Counselor Mackenzie? So, oh, it was moved in a second. Okay.
He goes second.
Those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Water master plan.
We don't think they better use a waste master plan.
Yes, that was the first quote. I got waster.
The waste master plan. I'm getting that.
Combining wastewater and water.
Combining waste and water.
Hey, look. Here's these upstairs playing sex tape. My cat, you're fresh.
Tony, he doesn't dress as good as Richard.
Geez, I went and bought a whole bunch of new clothes without some moving over. But it's so hot, I don't want to wear the jackets.
Appreciate it.
Um, yeah. I wasn't able to print this. For some reason, my printer wasn't connecting, so I just pulled up the report to council. So as council may recall, we're updating the water master plan. Previously, we've gone to council to discuss the formation of a steering committee. One of the things from that steering committee staff is suggesting is two members of council, two members from the Water Service Advisory Committee form the steering committee to assist staff with the water master plan. Going through the chair of the Water Service Advisory Committee, we were able to select two members from that committee, one being Jim Elliott, who's a local agricultural farmer, longtime farmer in this area, and then also another residential member or resident that's Cars Landing area that was also interested in being involved, Barry Van Snitz, I'm mispronouncing his name. Given the technical nature of the subject matter, we are requesting that Counselor Coles would sit on the steering committee as part of the, to go through the process. And the other fact that the, the Cars Landing part is such kind of an involved part of this update, we are actually also requesting that Counselor Reed consider sitting on as part of the steering committee. And I know it's a little different than what we discussed, that the steering committee... And I know it's a little different than what we discussed, that the steering committee was what staff is suggesting. And so the resolution is, option A is preferred staff option, and that alternative, Pat, come here and council for discussion.
Great, thank you. First, I have a question. The council has agreed to have another committee? They have commitments?
Yeah, that was a bit of a surprise. It would be nice to have a heads up, because my first question is, how much time is this going to take? Because, I mean, it generally works full time. I work full time, so.
Yeah, I envision approximately three to four meetings, maybe two to three meetings we can meet after hours. We can do this remotely via Teams. It is a bit of a commitment, given the vested interest kind of in that area that you may have and the potential of this turning into a future long-term servicing plan. We would like to have, we do understand that you also are very busy and...
When they send three or four meetings over, what time span?
Probably over the next three to four months.
It's probably a medium month.
Yeah, basically, a medium month, five months.
And...
I think you said yes. But if she's on the steering committee, put her in the backseat because she's a real figure.
Well, that was, yeah.
Yes, yes.
That was staff's proposal. However, we're open to other options as well. As far as we don't have more than three council members on the city committee, because otherwise, that would constitute a, sorry, a mandatory meeting.
Well...
So I believe that, I don't know, the council item had an interest in considering that could be as well.
The water committee?
Yeah. There is somebody from Cars Landing already that has been appointed by the Cherokee Board of Advisory Committee. So I don't know if Counselor Reed has other commitments and can attend. There are other options, I guess.
I just, those were the two suggested. And...
I think we have to let Kara decide.
Yeah.
I think it's up to Kara.
Or we could put three of us on it, and that way she can, if Kara misses.
Counselor Gammel?
My name was actually brought up at the meeting. I somehow, I don't know how that got completely missed, but...
The water advisory committee?
No, around this council taking over the strategy session. And, you know, I have to say that I'm concerned that staff, you know, is not even considering that agriculture has some noise here. And when we talk about the review of the water master plan, we're not talking about just one area. And I think Kyle is going to tell us that this is actually a review of the water master plan. It was a 20-year plan. You're not going to just review one little corner of it. We're going to review the whole thing. Is that not correct?
Absolutely. We're going to revote the whole plan. But one of the strategies suggested by the chair of the Water Service Advisory Committee is to put an agricultural voice on there, and that being Jim Elliott was who being suggested at that time.
And I might point out that Jim Elliott is no longer farming.
All right, well, counsel can appoint whoever.
Correct.
We're up.
It's just staff.
I mean, we can't appoint from other advisory committees, because they're the ones that are appointing people to them. So we, I believe they won't consider two counselors on the steering committee and up to three counselors. Counselor Reed?
Can I just, can I make a suggestion? Maybe if we already have Barry Van Snitz out of touch on the committee from Cars Landing, then I'm happy to be involved with any communication support that's needed to communicate to the Cars Landing community, and I can support it in that way. And then that would allow maybe Counselor Ireland and Counselor Gammel to be the two, or three, or when Counselor Cozer, the three council voices. I don't know whether that would work, or whether, how staff feel about that, but I'm happy to do that, to allow everybody who has an interest. Also, I am a Cars Landing Eastside Utilities customer, and I wouldn't want to put anything in there that could compromise the...
Conflict.
Yeah, conflict. I'm sure it wouldn't, but I just don't want to be in that position. And if I step back and help with the communication side of things and work for the community association, I'm very happy to do that, to support staff, because I know what you're doing for the area, so I do appreciate it.
Yeah, that would work for us, Your Worship.
I take a motion from Counselor Scarrow and Counselor McKenzie to appoint Counselor Ireland, Gammel, and Cozer. How's that work?
We can talk certain day.
Yep. Go ahead and make the motion.
I'll make the motion. But we hear from Alberto a little earlier that staff didn't really recommend having three counselors on this steering committee, because it kind of overloads it. So is it possible that we restrict the attendance to two? No.
Your Worship, we are, we're comfortable with three members of council on the steering committee. This is just a steering committee that is going to help the process to get through. And so at some point, you know, the draft plan will have to be reviewed by the whole advisory committee and then my council as well, so I'm like, I don't see a problem there.
And it's for all of the Lake Country.
I'm moving.
It is moved in a second, and so those in favor, I am. Both? Got it? You got that? Good. All right. Next up. All right.
Judy?
Thanks, Counsel.
Make your rounds. Where'd you put your sticker?
It's in my office. I'm back. So, Your Worship members. Your Worship members of council, I have the pleasure of introducing our new manager of planning this evening, Corey Gang or Green Gang, who will now be the district approving officer, or subject to council's consideration of that this evening. But I wanted to introduce Corey and Raina and traffic department. I have a question.
Thank you very much, and welcome on board.
Thank you.
Good to see you, good to have you.
Thank you very much.
Keep us going as well as we have.
Yes, hopefully so. Yes, thank you. Glad to be here.
Raina?
Welcome.
Thank you, Your Worship. So just following that, we do need a resolution of council to appoint Corey Gang as the approving officer effective immediately, and Jamie McEwen will be the deputy approving officer.
Okay, Counselor McKenzie and Counselor Gammel. Those in favor? Both, motion carried. Done. All right. Counselor Aron, Counselor Cozer.
That's a thing.
Nothing today. Counselor McKenzie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple little comments on what I see out in our community lately. I see that our beaches are busy, our lakes are busy, you know, we're getting a lot of visitors to the community. The only thing that I need to remind people is, once you pack in, you pack out. It seems like we're still missing that message, and I see a lot of things get left down on the beach. A lot of people decide to leave things out there that can clearly be put into the garbage can that's 10 or 15 feet away. So I would really like if people would start to clean up after themselves. It gets a little tiresome when the same people have to do it over and over and over. So other than that, I, all is, all is well. I would consider, you know.
Thank you. We need some more parking out there. Counselor Aron?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, a couple of things to build on what Counselor McKenzie just had to say. Yeah, definitely, it's been a little messier down at the beach than normal, and people aren't taking their stuff back. People are a little bit, a little bit crazier than normal, so just let's all chill out and let's remember that we still do have a pandemic out there, and you might not be all that affected. But it could be your grandmother, or somebody's father or mother, or anybody that gets it that doesn't quite make it. So, you know, Corona's been a little bit out of control, so let's pour our hands in and try to be a little bit better, so we can get through this. I've got a bit of a disturbing announcement to make. I don't know if people have seen it in the news, but it was on CastaNet. And it's kind of a warning to people in the community. On Sunday night, at about 10:00 p.m., a woman walking the trail down at the beach, just down from the safe, well, the unsafe harbor, let's call it, was assaulted by two men in hoodies. And we don't know what the nature of the assault was, if it was robbery or whatever it was. Fortunately, the woman was able to beat them off and escape, so we don't have any more details of that. But let's be careful and keep our eyes open. You know, there is, you know, I called the police today because they asked for any comments, and, you know, there was a lot of different characters around. And you do get that in the summer, but more different than normal. So, you know, if you did notice something, or something was out of place particularly on that Sunday evening, please report it, because we don't want to see this happen again. You know, it's a bit of a shock to our community down long there, and I think it would be shocking to anybody who lives in Lake Country to see that sort of thing happening here.
Thank you. Counselor Scarrow?
Well, I don't have anything too much to talk about this, and I spent an hour of my day today at the food bank. And I was very impressed with the amount of work and volunteers and safety standards that they have implemented at the food bank. But I was reminded by Joy, the lady who does all down there, that donations are very slow on coming in. Need is incredibly big. At this particular time, they have zero or very little produce to hand out. And they're handing out more hand personnel in a drive-through passion. And they intend to continue that drive-through passion all through the summer and until the obvious COVID challenge has been met. One of the challenges they're facing, though, Scott, is the parking lot and the, the work that we're doing on the multi-use facility has, in some cases, compromised the ability for people to drive through. And it's just caused a little bit of a problem, not too big. But she mostly wanted me to focus tonight on asking this community to please support the food bank in any way possible, whether it be with donation of food, money, cash, volunteer, anything like that. So I've done my job.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Gammel?
Thanks. I just, first of all, want to express my thanks on behalf of the citizens of the community for the work done on the seven local roads that were improved over the past few weeks, one of which I haven't driven on yet. I saw that they were just starting to pave on Williams Road. And I know that my daughter expressed a lot of excitement that she might finally be able to use that road and not destroy her car. So it's wonderful. And those are things that really improve our community for many of us in the community who don't bike everywhere, especially up in those very steep hills. The other thing I wanted to remind people, that there are many guests in the area. And as Bonnie Henry says, to be kind, be safe, be patient. But I might say that people need to also start to remember to wear a mask inside any public areas, anywhere where you can't distance yourself. Wear that mask. The people who are having the lowest death rates, the lowest transmission rates in the world, if you check it out, they are wearing masks. So let's, let's follow someone out and make us safe here.
Thank you. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo Counselor Gammel, Counselor Ireland's comments on keeping ourselves safe and on each other, safe with social distancing, keeping to our bubbles, and continuing to hand wash as much as we can. I would also like to thank staff at the district and the Walkerout Lake Country group, who are continuing to move forward with improvements to Cars Landing in terms of upgrading Coral Beach playground and the Coral Beach back road trail, improvements which are ever more essential as everybody's trying to get out and about and get some mental fitness and wellness there in the sunshine. I would notice I am seeing a rise in community concerns with traffic along Cars Landing Road and near misses on bicycles, hiking, and most recently, somebody with a pushchair. So with a baby inside, so I would plead with drivers, locals, and tourists to keep your speed down. Be aware of the uses of that road, particularly on the loop that goes from Commonage to Commonage. Try not to overtake on blind corners. And there is a lot of community engagement and optimism about the potential to have a design for a multimodal pathway along that area next year.
Thank you. All right. No, nothing further, but adjourned? And goodnight?